Okay, we're live.
Five, four, three, two, one.
Roll call.
Councilmember Bowman.
President.
Councilmember Farrelletto.
Here.
Councilmember Gullumbeck.
Here.
Councilmember Noakowski.
Present.
Council President Pridgen.
Ikey.
Majority Leader Rivera.
Present.
President Pro Tem Scanlon.
Present.
Councilmember Wingo.
Present.
Councilmember Wyatt.
Here.
Form is present.
Let's stand for the place of the flag.
My allegiance to the flag, to America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We will now hear from our council chaplain, the Reverend Dr. Al Warner.
As we come to today's session, a couple of verses that have been meaningful to me as everything has been happening in our city, our state, our nation, both from the Old Testament, the first one, one that I'm sure many of you may be familiar with, Micah 6:8, the calls to do justice, love, mercy, and walk humbly with God. Do justice, love mercy, walk humbly with our God. And then the second one that fits with the justice theme, I think for many of us, as we are navigating waters like this, we look to trusted voices that have guided our nation in times of turmoil. And when I think of prophetic voice and a pastoral voice, certainly Dr. Martin Luther King would be one that I hear. And oftentimes, as I hear his speeches, because of my age, I, I, I hear his actual voice, his words speaking those words. Many of you know that Amos 5:24 is actually carved into the Civil Rights Memorial Center in Montgomery, Alabama. But let justice roll on like a river, righteousness like a never failing stream. We sit on the lake, we sit on the river, we sit near Niagara Falls, we sit in all kinds of bodies of water. And the picture of Amos is that justice would roll on like a river, righteousness like a never failing stream. Dr. King was anchored, the Reverend part of him was anchored to the word of God, from his own pastor father, his own pastoral journey. But he was, never forget the prophetic voice that he took to the pulpit and every podium to which he stepped. So I'd like to pray into that scripture with you together today. Let's pray. Father, we pray today for justice for the too many black lives that have been subjected to death over the color of their skin. We pray, Father, for justice, as Dr. King called it out, to be not something relegated to the justice system, but that each one of us would have a true north when it comes to justice. Lord, thank you that you are a just God and that you stood against through your prophets, through your word injustice, anywhere that it popped up on planet earth, and you still do today. Lord, as I hear Dr. King's words from Amos, Chapter 5, "Let justice roll on like a river, righteousness like a never failing stream." Lord, I pray that to be the case in all nine council districts in our city, broader than that into our county and state and nation and world. Father, help us to hear those words that Dr. King lived his life by. But Lord, they weren't just Dr. King's words, they were eternal words from you. Lord, carve them as they're carved into the stones in Montgomery, Alabama, carve them even deeper into our hearts, minds, and spirits. And as decisions are made today, I pray for now, Father, that you will be the never failing river and stream in our midst. And we pray these things in your precious son's name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Dr. Warner. Councilmembers Memorial. Councilmember Bowman.
Thank you, Mr. President. Two members of our Lovejoy community I'd like to remember today. Mr. Frank Carowana lost his battle with cancer. He grew up on the West Side, but Frank was a member of our big timers club over in Lovejoy, and he hung out there for the last decade. So Frank was a Buffalo Water employee for the last, he retired 37 years in. So certainly respect his service to the city of Buffalo, our condolences to his family and friends. And also Mr. Ken Morgan, who was, lived over at our Mont Senior Gary Apartments in the, off of Bailey Avenue. And Ken was actually a friend of a family member of ours, so I got to know him very well. He was a cool cat. And he, he was very well respected in the arts community and a very passionate advocate for the arts in Western New York. Thirty-one years in as a photographer, a teacher at Locust Street Art. So he's an accomplishment of many talents and just like to keep him in our thoughts and my condolences to his friends and family as well. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, sir. Any others? Councilmember Wyatt.
Thank you, Mr. President. One of, send out prayers to the Meacham family, Harold Meacham, who was a longtime resident in the University District on Stockbridge Avenue. He was 100 years old. And unfortunately, he survived the World War II. He was a World War II veteran, but died of COVID. We had an opportunity to interview him for our Bailey Avenue Historical Committee. And just one of the nicest people you ever meet, wanted to meet, and had a long history of knowing what went on, how Bailey Avenue and Kensington was developed. So it was a blessing to get him on video, but we, our thoughts and prayers are with his family. Also, the passing of Lieutenant Todd McAllister, his brother Eugene McAllister passed unfortunately today. I wouldn't be in my position if it had not been for Lieutenant McAllister. And his brother was very close to my family. My brother-in-law was his best friend, my sister and my niece. He was my niece's godfather. He's just a fun guy. And during this time, please keep that family in prayer.
Thank you. Any other council members? All right. Seeing no others, we always remember our men and women who have given their life for our country since our last meeting and the safety of other countries around this world. And during this time of pandemic, we also give this moment to those essential workers all over the world who keep this world going when others are sick. We pause in this chamber and around homes in order for a moment of silence to remember. Thank you. On a motion by Mr. Revere, said goodbye, Mr. Scanlon, the minutes of the stated meeting held on May 26, 2020 are approved. Councilmembers, you have all of the late files before you. Are there any objections to any of the late files? Hearing no objections to any of the late files, we will hear the entire agenda that is before us. And I believe we are going from the top, if I'm not mistaken.
Item number one, declaration of state of emergency for May 30 of 2020.
Motion to receive and file items one, two, and three.
Second by the President Pro Tem Scanlon.
Item number four, extend contract with New York State Docks and CEO.
Motion to approve.
Second by Councilmember Bowman.
All right. Councilmember Bowman.
Yes.
Councilmember Farrelletto.
Yes.
Councilmember Gullumbeck.
Yes.
Councilmember Noakowski.
Yes.
Council President Pridgen. Majority Leader Rivera.
Yes.
President Pro Tem Scanlon.
Yes.
Councilmember Farrelletto. Wingo.
Yes.
Councilmember Wyatt.
Yes.
Item number five, report to sell various lots on Busty.
That could be approved, Majority Leader.
Motion to approve. Motion is to approve.
Second by Councilmember Wingo.
Councilmember Bowman.
Yes.
Councilmember Farrelletto.
Yes.
Councilmember Gullumbeck.
Yes.
Councilmember Noakowski.
Yes.
Council President Pridgen.
Yes.
Majority Leader Rivera.
Yes.
President Pro Tem Scanlon.
Yes.
Councilmember Wingo.
Yes.
Councilmember Wyatt.
Yes.
Item number six, capital debt service fund.
This item was left open. I believe the Controller's Office was supposed to get back to us what's information regarding the interest rates or whether or not the control board would do the borrowing. Has anybody heard from the control board or the Controller's Office regarding this item?
I will speak that the, I know I have not received it, which means nothing has been filed with the council. So at this point, it should be considered that we have not received that information. I know it is marked for finance and we were very clear on yesterday that if we did not receive that, we, we could not make a decision. I still stand by, as long as we have five council members, to be able to convene a special session after we have been educated on the control board and their position. Because just borrowing based on the city and not hearing whether the control board could get a more favorable rating, would be able to save us money, I, I for one am okay with it going to finance. I'll ask the Finance Chair if that is his desire also and any other council member.
Yes, sir. Finance.
So. Motion to send to finance, second by the Finance Chair, Councilmember Wyatt.
Item number seven, certificate of necessity fund transfer for downtown ballpark.
Motion to receive and file.
Second by Councilmember Bowman.
Item number eight, deficiency note resolution.
Motion to send to finance.
Second by Councilmember Wyatt.
Item number nine, Fillmore Ave Payment Rehab Interfund Loan.
Motion to approve items nine and 10.
Second by Councilmember Noakowski.
Councilmember Bowman.
Yes.
Councilmember Farrelletto.
Yes.
Councilmember Gullumbeck.
Yes.
Councilmember Noakowski.
Yes.
Council President Pridgen.
Yes.
Majority Leader Rivera.
Yes.
President Pro Tem Scanlon.
Yes.
Councilmember Wingo. Councilmember Wyatt.
Yes.
Item number 11, 2019, 2023 third quarter gap sheets response.
Motion to receive and file.
Second by Councilmember Gullumbeck.
Item number 12, Buffalo Place En rotary Rink Operating Agreement.
Motion to approve items 12 through 15.
And for the Rotary Rink, I did get, the Commissioner Finn did come back and he did present that there is an out in case the city financially could not finance that or any other project. Second by Councilmember Farrelletto.
Councilmember Bowman.
Yes.
Councilmember Farrelletto.
Yes.
Councilmember Gullumbeck.
Yes.
Councilmember Noakowski.
Yes.
Council President Pridgen.
Yes.
Majority Leader Rivera.
Yes.
President Pro Tem Scanlon.
Yes.
Councilmember Wingo.
Yes.
Councilmember Wyatt.
Yes.
Item number 16, appoint bridge operating engineer.
Motion to send items 16 and 17 to civil service.
Second by Councilmember Wingo.
Item number 18, armed guard services for City Hall.
Motion to send to finance.
Second by Councilmember Wyatt.
Item number 19, permission to accept grant for 2020 coronavirus emergency supplemental funding program.
Motion to approve items 19, 20, can you keep on going down, scroll down? 19 and 20.
Second by Councilmember Gullumbeck.
Councilmember Bowman.
Yes.
Councilmember Farrelletto.
Yes.
Councilmember Gullumbeck.
Yes.
Councilmember Noakowski.
Yes.
Council President Pridgen.
Yes.
Majority Leader Rivera.
Yes.
President Pro Tem Scanlon.
Yes.
Councilmember Wingo.
Yes.
Councilmember Wyatt.
Yes.
Item number 21, liquor license notice.
Motion to receive and file items 21, 22, 23, 24, 25, and 26.
I, I think that 22, I don't think that's supposed to be receiving file, am I correct?
Oh, that's a late file, excuse me. Back to item 22, a late file.
Right. Or, or is it to be a receiving file? Councilmember Scanlon?
No, I believe we're going to send that to police oversight.
Right. So we can just do the first, that one item, the 22?
Is that, I'm sorry, is that the item that the late file that Chris sent, emergency meeting for the police oversight?
Yes, 22 would be separate. So we're only deciding on 21, right?
Okay, 21 is a receive and file.
Second by Councilmember Noakowski.
Item number 22.
Can I speak on item 22?
It's not before us yet, sir. She's going to call the number now.
Item number 22, request for emergency meeting of the Police Oversight Committee.
All right. Councilmember Revere.
Thank you. I have spoken with Chris Scanlon regarding this item earlier today, and I agree with it. We should be holding more meetings, additional meetings. I have contacted Commissioner Byron Lockwood. I spoke with him and I also spoke with the mayor regarding additional meetings. And the mayor was very receptive to adding quarterly meetings. So instead of meeting twice a year, we will be meeting quarterly. Besides that, I have spoken to the Commissioner about keeping the district council members informed in cases of major problems. I found out about many of the things that are happening, unfortunate, via Facebook or through the media. He has a degree and has instructed his chiefs to keep all of the council members informed in case of any major emergencies within our respective districts. I think it's important that we stay in touch with them. We have, my office has met with the Advisory Committee to talk about their wants and their asks. I just want to announce that we will be holding, holding our Police Oversight Committee meeting July 28. We have tried a number of times to add additional meetings, but for one reason or another, the police department wasn't able to. Since then, we have changed that. And I, I want to thank Councilmember Chris Scanlon once again for bringing this up. This is something that we have brought up before to the police department. As a matter of fact, they canceled one of the meetings that was scheduled, unfortunately. But with all the things that are happening, I can understand the need to hold these meetings. In between, we will be informed, unfortunately, because of all the things that we're going through, it makes it more difficult. We've been doing everything virtual, but the police department, the administration is on board. And I want to thank the mayor, especially the mayor, for agreeing to hold more meetings. So thank you very much to Chris for the resolution.
Councilmember Scanlon.
The letter.
Thank you, Council President. As it was stated, this item's a letter that I sent to the Majority Leader, asking him to call an emergency meeting of the Police Oversight Committee. I'm aware that there is a police oversight meeting scheduled for the end of July. But in light of recent events, I think that seven, eight weeks, nearly two months is far too long to wait for answers from the administration of the Buffalo Police Department. The public is demanding reform, they are demanding answers. And I believe during these times, we have to shoulder that responsibility, ask those tough questions of that administration, and assist in facilitating change. We are elected to represent the people of the city of Buffalo, and I do not believe that we can wait that long for answers. I want to thank the Majority Leader for agreeing to schedule an emergency meeting, and I anxiously await the opportunity to question the leadership of the Buffalo Police Department about, among other things, generally, and who makes the determination to deploy units such as the ERT? And more specifically, who was deploying those units over the course of the past 10 days? What tactics are taught and therefore used by units such as the ERT in order to maintain crowd control versus clearing out an area? What is the purpose of the tactics? Are they considered best practices? Who developed these tactics? In situations such as Saturday, May 30th, and Monday, June 1st, when protests turned violent? Who within the Buffalo Police Department is commanding the situation? Who is in charge? Who determines how many officers are called in and where they're dispatched to? Who determines when tactics such as tear gas or pepper bullets are used? What is the communication structure to ensure that everyone from top down to, from the administration down to the boots on the ground, they know exactly what is supposed to be going on? You know, the Internal Affairs Division of the Buffalo Police Department investigates complaints against rank and file members of the Buffalo Police Department. Who exactly is the oversight over the command team? And how is that taking place? And it's my personal opinion that several mistakes have been made within that command structure over the course of the past 10 days. So I want to know what protocols, what conversations have taken place and what protocols or procedures are going to be implemented to prevent them from happening in the future. So again, I thank the Majority Leader for agreeing to schedule the meeting. I, again, anxiously await the opportunity to ask the leadership of the Buffalo Police Department those questions and many, many more.
Majority Leader, was the, did you say July 28?
July 28, that's correct.
Was that, was that because that is when command could be present?
We gave the Commissioner a number of dates. That's what we normally do because he has a whole command staff. And so we try to work around his schedule and his command staff's schedule. And leave him two dates in July. It could have been from the first week all the way up to, it could have been June, for that matter, all the way up until before recess. And that's the date that the Commissioner picked based on the availability, I imagine, of his command staff. I understand the point, the importance, and there are a lot of questions. I think that we all want answers, especially when it's fresh in our mind. And, and certainly, I mean, there are a lot of questions on many sides, not just on what the police, how the, the, the training that's involved, the utilization, whether or not force is used or not, those are all questions that we can ask. A lot of those questions will probably be answered in executive session because of the risk of, of litigation that may happen in the future. So even on some of those issues that are before us that we're requesting, that would probably be spoken in executive session. It doesn't have to be either or. I think that we can ask the Commissioner those questions at the same time. If you have questions, when I have questions, I'll put it in writing, send it to him, I'll call him, ask for a response. So it doesn't have to be either or. It could be, it could be a combination of both or one, either or. So I, I agree. If you have those questions, let's, let's note it, let's send it to him and ask him to respond to it. If he can respond to it before the meeting, that's fine as well. If, if he can meet before the 28th, that is perfect with me. I wanted more meetings. As a matter of fact, I've been a proponent of holding, having more meetings. And for one reason or another, they, they were looking to do it. But I'm glad now that they're willing to do it and we're going to move forward. Regent, please. Perhaps our staff can send those requests. We can also ask if they can move up the meeting. I don't have a problem at all with holding more meetings.
Yeah, I think in, in all fairness to transparency, that it's okay for people to write in, but it needs to be a part of the public record, what that response is, except as it deals, for instance, with something that we wouldn't be able to disclose to the public because of possible pending litigation. But here, here is my concern. That is some time away, eight weeks, to get answers on a situation that is very, very fluid. And when I say fluid, I mean like gasoline, not like water. And so I think not to have, and I think that, and you're right, you did send many dates. I think that we might have to whittle that down to dates that are closer and just go back, if it's the desire of the council, to be able to say, we, we, we need something closer. And this is why. At the end of the day, some of this is so important because if something happens again, I think we have to be in front of this and not in back of it. And saying we're going to meet in July, the end of July, and we've got all summer to go down. So I, I, I for one, and I always say this, I'm only one person, I would like to see that meeting happen within the next two weeks. And I think it is so important because if we're saying emergency meeting, emergency isn't July 28th. That, you know, that, that's elective surgery, that's not emergency. And so I think that it, we need to go back and they have, as you said, our, our Commissioner, and, you know, have been very, very, everyone on that level and his level, his commissioners have been very open to meeting. So maybe, you know, I know we're talking about a lot that's going on right now, and to me, that's even more reason that we need to meet very quickly. Because if we don't, and, and I'll just give you this example, I know a council that just had to meet on a Sunday. And because of things that were going on and decisions they had to meet. So it's my suggestion that you go back and we make that, try to get that meeting, even if this whole command staff cannot be there. It is not necessary. Most of the time, the command staff is not answering the questions. I think it's the people who can answer the questions and who can make decisions that need to be there. And they're not out, you know, I mean, I, I just, that's my personal opinion. I've said, I won't, I won't.
No, no, that's fine. And I, we've all would like, I think every council member, especially the ones that are on the Oversight Committee and the ones that have attended both the Oversight Meeting and the Advisory Board Meetings, because some council members do actually attend even the community meetings, the advisory meetings. So I'm all for more meetings, additional meetings. I, I don't mind asking the tough questions. The ones they can't answer, they'll let us know they can't answer. I don't mind going back. As a matter of fact, we've asked in the past for additional meetings. It's unfortunate it took an incident like this to, to, for them to reconsider and, and actually do it. However, going forward, we're going to have additional meetings. If we can get in a meeting in between now and the next few weeks, I wouldn't be opposed to it. I would ask for it. I'll get back to Commissioner and we'll circle back and let you know.
Councilmember Scanlon.
Thank you, Council President. I couldn't agree more with you that waiting till the end of, the end of July is unacceptable. You know, we've heard from the Buffalo Police Department over the course of the last week or so, that they're, they're willing to listen to the public and willing to help facilitate some change. And I don't think it, it's that too heavy a lift to ask for them to walk across the street for one meeting. I don't, I don't want to get into a back and forth with letters that take time and again, just drag things out. We had an unfortunate incident that took place the other night where you had officers suspended within hours. And here, we would maybe let the, wait for the Commissioner to come in and answer questions about the department and the possible tactics that involved that, were involved in that incident. We're going to wait eight weeks for those answers? I just, I don't think that's, that's, that jives, quite frankly. I think, again, I think it's not too much to ask for them to walk across the street and have one meeting. And like you said, I don't need the entire command staff here. I don't think we need the entire, we don't need 20 people to come over. We need the Commissioner and the Deputy Commissioners, who I would assume are the people running the department, come over to answer those questions. So again, I don't think it's that heavy a lift asking to come over for one meeting sometime in the next 10 days or two weeks.
All right. And I'm going to come to Councilmember Wyatt, but Council, President Pro Tem, they don't, no one even has to come across the street because it would be virtual. So it is just about flipping the camera on. And the, the reason I'm, I'm kind of staying on this because I, I think that especially in a, in the climate that we are in, that it is so important to quickly answer questions and, and to just deal with our policies and, and procedures in a very open and a very rapid way. Because the longer we wait on this, the more people say, I need that answer. Why don't we have that answer? Why don't we have that answer? Instead of just answering the question, Councilmember Wyatt. I'm sorry, I'm going to go to Councilmember, now come right back to you, Major.
Okay. No, I will, I will let the Majority Leader speak, sir.
Councilmember Wyatt, you got the floor. Go ahead and finish yours, and then I'll come back to the Majority.
Thank you. I just wanted to echo, I, I agree. I think we have to be a little bit more responsive. But I did want to go on record to talk about this council and us being proactive in this environment. We have not sat on our hands about the issues regarding the police and the community. I know that I've been very loud and clear about the things that have been very, very positive in our relationship with our E District Police Chiefs. And I think Mike Bryan, Councilmember Bowman would say the same thing. We've met a numerous times at the E District Meeting and people are able to come and talk. So I don't want people to think that we've been sitting on our hands and we, we all have a horrible relationship with the police. There are some incidents that we have to address, and I think the more rapid we can address them, the better. I think this council has put forth the Police Oversight Committee, which needs to be commended because people look like we have I think this council has put forth the Police Oversight Committee, which needs to commend, be commended, because people look like we haven't done anything. Well, we have done a lot of positive things, and I think the Police Oversight Committee is definitely one. Um, they work very hard. They've come to my district and have a couple of meetings. Um, so I think that we've gotten um, a lot of input from folks, but now it's time to incorporate some of that with action. And so again, I want to commend the Council President and Majority Leader for their efforts, because I think it's it's getting very tough. But, you know, we've been big boys, uh, we've been elected to do the right things, and I think that we've been in the forefront of addressing this issue. And we're not afraid to have, like Dave said, we're not afraid to ask the tough questions. We're not sitting here just taking a side. We want the best thing for our residents and our citizens, and I think that we want the best for our police office as well, just like we have to get um, body cams. We want to get them more training. We want to get them police cars. I think we've been very fair in making certain that we do the job that we're called to do for the right things at the right time for the residents of the city of Buffalo and our um, police and fire. Thank you.
Majority Leader.
Thank you very much. Many of the changes that have happened within the Police Department has come through the Police uh, Oversight Committee Meeting. And I just want to take a moment to thank those individuals that are watching us via Facebook, who also have concerns that they would like to bring before the police oversight, uh, because we want their perspective as well. Uh, they have been engaged. As a matter of fact, the body cameras came because people from the community came to council chambers and asked for the body cameras. The diversion program, it didn't happen because of the common council woke up one day and let's say, hey, let's have a diversion program. It happened because people came before the police oversight committee, de-education training. Um, has happened, not because we thought about it, but because people from the community at large came before the common council. A lot of the good ideas, as a matter of fact, didn't come from this common council. It came from outside of the common council. So I invite those people that are watching to also come to the Oversight Meeting that we're going to hold in the next couple of weeks and share with us your concerns as well. Um, this cuts both ways, but we're here to make the right decisions. What's not one side or another, it's just make doing what's right. And that's what we're going to do. We're going to continue to do what's right. So you're all invited. You have an opportunity to clock in. We'll let you know when we're going to hold the meeting, so you can file something with the Clerk's Office, so you can come in and speak on things that matter to you as well. Thank you.
Thank you. The next person to speak was Councilmember Golumbeck and then Bowman.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to commend Mr. Scanlon for the leadership he's taking on this item. Um, I agree that the end of July is too long to wait. Uh, I also believe that if we would have met too quickly, uh, that that would have been a problem as well, because I do believe that you need uh, to have passions calmed as much as possible, so that when we look at issues like the Police Department, et cetera, that we're able to assess things uh, rationally and long term and not have some sort of a a knee jerk reaction. Um, and just a reminder that ultimately we do have subpoena power. Um, and if worse comes to worse, and I don't think it would come to that, but uh, you know, we have subpoena power, you know, we can demand that they come over um, and that they talk to us. And I know that we've tried to work closely and work well with people. Um, but, you know, sometimes perhaps, uh, you know, being a little bit firmer, especially in a situation like this, um, you know, using that subpoena power would be important. Thank you.
Councilmember Bowman.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to uh, also go on record and say I think it's important that we get to the table. Um, there's another resolution that you submitted that I'm supporting and uh, in that it talks about getting to the table to thoughtfully deliberate, develop practical policy recommendations or practices. I think we get all sides to the table and uh, with open minds and we find solutions. So I'm definitely in support of getting uh, getting to the table sooner. Thank you.
Councilmember Noakowski.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to echo the st- uh, sentiments of my colleagues, the city, um, the the people of the city deserve answers and they deserve them now, so the time is now.
All right, did I get to everybody? All right, I I know I did not take a motion on that one, I believe correctly, correct clerk?
Yes.
Um, second by Councilmember Scanlon.
Item number 23, caucus meeting transcription.
Motion to receive and file items 23, 24, uh, 25 and 26.
Second by Councilmember Bowman.
Resolutions, item number 27, ordinance amendment, chapter 414, special events.
Motion to approve.
Second by Councilmember Farrelittle. And if you have your hand up, I'm only seeing three council members, so I didn't know whether you wanted to comment. Councilmember Farrelittle, you have.
Yes, thank, thank you very much. I want to thank all of my colleagues on the council for supporting this, for giving your input on it, for advocating for this. This is going to help the local businesses that are in our district. I also want to thank um, the administration. The mayor put together a working group together with 20 different uh, business owners to be a part of this. These are going to be very good temporary changes to help these small businesses that have been extremely negatively impacted from the COVID closures when their businesses closed on March 15th. So I again, just want to thank everyone and appreciate everyone's support and hard work on this. Thank you.
Thank you, sir, for your leadership, and I'm looking forward to eating.
Councilmember Bowman.
Yes.
Councilmember Farrelittle.
Yes.
Councilmember Golumbeck.
Yes.
Councilmember Noakowski.
Yes.
Council President Pridgen.
Yes.
Majority Leader Rivera.
Yes.
President Pro Temp Scanlon.
Yes.
Councilmember Wingo.
Yes.
Councilmember Wyatt.
Yes.
Item number 28, Carol Horn Inquiry.
Um, this item that is, um, I'll, I'll wait for the motion. Well, I'll, I can speak on it now. This item that's before us, first of all, because I know the public is watching, I want to understand something about what's called a late file. So this was filed late, which means that I filed it after the deadline, where it would automatically go on the agenda. And if only one council member objects to a late file, um, it dies on the vine, and either you have to bring it back to the next council meeting or hold a special meeting to discuss it again. Um, I think what is so important about this, regardless of how colleagues vote, is that not one person objected to the late file, not one person on this council objected, um, and allowed this to come to the floor. Um, and so I want to, I want to start off there, that every council member allowed this to come to the floor. Um, this is actually an inquiry on uh, Carol Horn, um, who was a former police officer and requesting um, that the State Attorney General um, open an investigation or inquiry into an incident in which Ms. Horn states that she uh, jumped on the back of a police officer who she felt was endangering the life of a uh, a person who was uh, allegedly being taken into custody. Um, this did happen 13 years ago. I don't believe many of us were, I know, I should say, I wasn't on the council then. Um, and when I did get to the council, it was an issue uh, that I did uh, take up. Um, and when I took up that issue, it was to initially look at the amount of uh, time that she said that she had that should have qualified her for retirement after this incident. Um, there are a lot of layers to this incident. Um, and uh, even in discussion yesterday, I was reminded of how many layers there are and how many people um, at at times uh, tried to intervene. I know that at one point, uh, the mayor of the city did ask for an inquiry such as this with the sitting AG. Um, that sitting AG came back with a finding um, that uh, nothing was done wrong. Well, we know now that there is a new AG, uh, State Attorney General. Uh, we know that this was during a time uh, that we did not have this much support uh, for reform, that we did not have this much public support uh, for inquiries such as this. So if we say that an officer does something wrong when they don't intervene, and we now have an officer that I've always believed did something right, um, we're asking for those two things uh, to be examined by the State Attorney General um, so that we could have some findings of it from a different set of eyes uh, during a different period of time. Um, I have been saying this um, since this is issue came back up. Uh, we held it on the table uh, without, for a couple of years even here on the council. So some would say, well, now it's too late. I don't think Ms. Horn would say it's too late. I don't think that her children would say it's too late, and I don't think this community is saying it's too late. I think they're saying right now, uh, right now, while the uh, atmosphere is one of let's not only talk about it, but let's do something about it. So in a few minutes after any other statements, I'll take uh, the vote. Councilmember Wingo, I believe you had your hand up, and then Councilmember Wyatt.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I appreciate the acknowledgement, and I do want you to add me to this resolution to support the inquiry, to ultimately uh, find out what we can do as a common council to ensure that folks who take their duty to intervene seriously are made whole. Now, we do understand that there are a lot of variables around this, but the fact of the matter is, and I'll be done after this, the fact of the matter is a man is still alive because of Carol Horn. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Wyatt.
Thank you, Mr. President. I, when you talked about this in caucus, I supported this, and I still support this. And I'm going to be as transparent as I can be on this. Carol Horn supported my opponent. And you know, we all know when you, someone comes after you, sometimes you don't want to do the right thing, but this is the right thing to do. And I'm even further supporting it because I saw a live feed in which Carol, Carol Horn was at a protest, I guess, with the two young men to two officers who were being charged. There were a group of people, I'm not going to say officers, I don't know, some of them had their uniforms on, some of them didn't. But they, in unison, in unison, fired, fired, fired. Hmm, that sends a message to me. And I think the message it says is that if we don't put some laws in place that makes sure that officers who are sworn to protect and serve are protected, that this will be what will happen to them, because we want them to do their job. We want them to do what they're sworn to do. But what happened to Ms. Horn, when she did not try anybody, they recognized her, and you can see the video. I got caught in the video too. And sometimes that video is the best proof that you can get. And they said, fired, they chanted it. So I support this as well as the resolution to make certain that officers who stand up to do the right thing, to protect innocent people from dying like George Floyd are protected, just like whistleblowers. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Councilmember Golumbeck.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you for explaining um, to people that are listening about the late file and all of that, because I received quite a few uh, email messages from people of castigating me for opposing this resolution. Um, number one, I don't oppose the resolution. Um, you know, I do believe in due process. I do believe that an investigation is uh, you know, should be warranted. Um, that has been my position, you know, with pretty much every position that's come in front of us. Um, I think that due process always needs to be followed. Um, and if there's new information that is available, um, I think that that should be looked at in an investigation at all. Um, when I made my comments earlier about uh, you know, doing anything uh, knee jerk or reactionary, um, this is the point that I was trying to make. The people that are contacting me that are saying that I've opposed to this, and and they actually alleged that it seemed like, I think that they think that the council can can give her her pension back. Uh, you know, that's the type of misinformation that's out there during this period of very, very high tension. So, you know, publicly and for the record, you know, I support the due process. I support the investigation um, and taking a look at this and letting the facts come out, letting the record speak for itself. Uh, I support that 100%. And once again, Mr. President, thank you for explaining things.
Thank you, and thank you for even further explaining um, concerning the retirement. The retirement of police officers is not controlled by the City of Buffalo Administration or Council. It is controlled by the New York State uh, Retirement System. And I think that is so important because when people say the council should give the retirement, I think that if the council had that power, we would have, well, I don't think, we would have that conversation, and it would be, I I know I would sponsor the resolution to get her her retirement and figure out how to do that. Um, but at the end of the day, this is New York State. And so that's why we're asking the New York State Attorney General uh, to investigate. And I want to be clear, we're asking, but it doesn't mean that we'll be granted that. Um, and I am doubly prepared to continue going up as high as I can uh, to get a fresh set of eyes uh, to look at uh, this case. So thank you, uh, Councilmember Golumbeck. Um, was there anyone else? Sorry, I just wanted to make sure I missed a hand. All right, um, uh, the move, motion? Majority Leader.
Motion to, is that a resolution to that items uh, 28, 29 and 30?
All right, second by Councilmember Wingo.
Mr. Mr. Chair, did they put me on that resolution?
Uh, please make sure that we add Councilmember Wingo to Resolution Number 28.
Thank you.
Um, if I can, on 29, so I I don't want any of this to get lost, on 29, which is the uh, duty to intervene, because there are several things. Um, so when we vote on them in the block, I just want to make sure people know um, how proactive this council is being. Um, again, this was a late file. Again, any council member could have said at the beginning of this meeting, they object to the late file. And we would not, at this point, be adopting what is known as uh, the duty to intervene policy, which is already on the books. However, it does not seem at times that it is being followed. And part of what I believe now, and that the next resolution I'll talk about, is that we have conflicting policies. And so I think that was one of the reason uh, that uh, the President Pro Temp is saying, we we need to, he, he, there's some questions that need to be answered and answered publicly, because the duty to intervene, which would be like what what I am suggesting Ms. Horn uh, did, um, by stepping in and saying, let me help a person who may be being injured or injured by my, by another police officer is already on the books. Here's where part of the problem may be. If there is also a policy, as I've heard only verbally and through the press, that when an officer is in line and um, doing crowd control, that they do not stop, they stay in order, then those policies directly clash. Because that would suggest, one policy says I keep going and a medic behind me will take care of it. But then that means then the policy, the duty to intervene goes away possibly. And to have any officer out there who has to try to decide, which one do I do? Am I going to be disciplined? If I, if I stop and help because I've been told to keep going. Um, and so that's what this duty to intervene, the the looking back at it, and that's why I think it's so important uh, for uh, number, is it number 29 uh, to happen, or did I miss one? No, but am I at the, yeah, so I'm not at the other one that I'll talk about, which is about policies, because we're not, we haven't discussed that one yet, right? We're just at 29. Did you include 30 in that, Majority Leader?
No, I didn't.
Okay, so I'll, I'll be quiet until you do. Um, someone else had their hand up, Councilmember Wingo?
Yes, sir. I appreciate you uh, putting this resolution forward regarding a duty to intervene. Let me say this about the duty to intervene. Duty to intervene literally tells an officer that they must intervene at a point when it's safe for them to do so, if it's not compromising their safety, if they should witness another officer abusing someone or using excessive force, force that is not proportionate to the issue that they are dealing with. That's the duty to intervene. We would have a lot more officers intervening. We would have had, let me correct myself, a lot more officers intervening, had they not been afraid that if they should report another officer, because remember, you have to put your name on a report and say, and call in, and let the, to command staff or management know that you are witnessing someone get treated unfairly. Let me just be clear, you watch somebody get in their butt. You watch somebody getting their butt toe up. And you know that this is excessive. So the duty to intervene says, calls on that officer to call into management. And then at that point, write out a report on your partner. Now, we're at the part where the union discourages police officers from reporting on other police officers. We would have had more police officers engaging in duty to intervene, had they not been afraid that they were not going to get represented, should they need legal counsel by the union. That is the problem. The problem is the union makes these officers afraid and they have to put food on their table, that even though they see someone get choked or beat, whatever the case is, they won't get represented, they won't get representation. That is a problem. And these good officers out here are faced with these moral dilemmas. And that's what they are, moral dilemmas. Am I going to report my partner who's using excessive force unnecessarily? Or am I going to keep my job and not be in this litigation? This is a simple issue. What we need to do is ensure that the officers who do intervene are protected, period. There is no more discussion. If an officer intervenes, done, that's it. Conversation over. You intervene, boom, you are protected. The person on that report, they have protection as well. But the officer who was doing the reporting should be covered, just like the folks who are whistleblowing.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Counsel, thank you, sir. Councilmember Wyatt?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to echo what Councilmember Wingo stated. And, you know, the point I was making with Kariel Horn is that she did something that was the right thing to do. Similar to Colin Kaepernick, he stood up for something that was right. And four or five years later, after he's lost all this money and he's been discredited, now the NFL says, you know what, we want to allow you the right to protest. And so it's always this revisionist history. However, the thing that I've talked about Kariel Horn and how they chided her in saying fired speaks to when you go against that line, you're, you were no longer one of them. And the comment that we have in our community about no snitching. You know, snitching, when you snitch, you know what happens? So we have a problem with the snitching culture. But when it's flipped on the other side, it seems like it's okay. So I strongly support this and I hope that the state will stand with us to make certain that officers who are sworn to protect and serve, not just the people that they work with, but also the residents, that's their goal. That's what we want. And again, I'm going to go even further. Because I know people are putting the police against the community. Well, I'm going to say from my experience, this council member and the relationship that I have with my E District Chief, and I think I say it at all of our meetings, when Menza is there, he's an exceptional chief. And I'm going to tell you, we had some spirited conversation recently. There are some things that I don't agree with him, he didn't agree with me. But you know what we walked away respecting one another. So when there was a shooting on Bailey Avenue, even though we had our disagreement, he called me up, the council member, I want to give you the update on this. And so it's okay for us to disagree on things, but there's got to be a way that we can come together. And I know we can. I think Councilmember Delumbet said sensible people can come to an agreement. I absolutely agree. So it doesn't have to be us versus them. It's us versus ourselves. And I think that we are reasonable people. We want to see a terrific police department. I think that I've supported, we've supported everything the police have asked for. Cars, raises, we support that training, we support those things. We're not against our police, but we do want better police. And I'm going to say again, I am not anti-police. I am anti-bad police. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you all. Any other comments? Comment, Councilmember Scanlon.
Thank you, Council President. You know, I'm voting in favor of this resolution and I want to thank you for filing it. I think that we should always be looking, again, it was made, the point was made that this policy exists, but I think we should always be looking at policy and protocol procedure and how we can consistently be improving upon it. So I think it's important that we do that. But one thing I did want to touch on is that the, an email sent by the union to members of a unit talking about lack of representation was referenced. And I think it will come out in time during some of the conversations we're having, that there was much, much more to that than just one email. I know that members of the police department felt like they were left out to dry during several of the worst nights of the riots over the course of the past week and other instances in the past. So I think any pushing from the union was more the cherry on top or the final straw that broke the camel's back more than the full-blown reasoning behind any action taken by any officers. I've had a conversation with countless officers. I spoke for almost an hour yesterday with a former commissioner of the police department. And again, this is the reason I've called for that emergency meeting with the leadership within the department to get to the bottom of all this stuff, ask the questions about who's in charge, who's making what determinations. And when it comes to this duty to intervene, as I said, I think it's absolutely important that we look at constantly improving any protocol or procedures that we have, any policy that we have. But I just want to make sure that we're not blanketing each individual case as though they're the same. Obviously, we would want each case to be independently investigated and looked at. I think it gets very dangerous because obviously the particulars which each case could be very, very varying. And so I think it's very important that we are not just taking a policy and using it as a blanket example for the duty to intervene. Because again, each, in absolutely every instance where this takes place, should be independently investigated.
All right, before I come back to Councilmember Wyatt, was there anybody who hadn't spoken that had their hand up that I missed? All right, Councilmember Wyatt?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to say, I totally agree with President Pro Temp Scanlon. Even, is it addresses those two individuals who were part of the riot line? You know, and I had some pretty intense conversations with some people. I'm saying that was totally different from the officer who killed George Floyd. That was totally different. These gentlemen are trained to do a job, trained to do it a certain way. And it's almost like the military, and this is paramilitary, they don't have a choice in how to do it. So I'm not giving them out, but I am saying that we need to look at, how do we train, change that training? Because it wasn't them acting individually, it was their training that they did what they did. They're not taught, or it's not something that's available to them to do or step back and try to help someone. You know, it's almost like a movie that I talk about a lot of times is A Few Good Men. Someone gave them an order to go give someone the code red. And giving that order, someone died. So the two guys were following an order. So are you telling me that they're guilty of a murder? But they were being told to do something? So it is a kind of a complex issue. But I do think it's something that, again, once we bring the group together and we start talking about some of the policies that we can come to understanding and implement effective policies without us taking a side, but looking at what is good for the residents of the City of Buffalo. If we ever get into another crisis situation, what are we going to put in place? What reforms are going to effectively have our officers in a position to win and not a position to be looked upon negatively? I wholeheartedly look forward to that. I think it's a positive thing. And sometimes crisis calls us to a better level and I'm looking for a better level. I think that each of us have a sincere heart to make sure that we do the right thing for not just the police department, but for the residents who are asking for change. And the people around the world who unfortunately saw Buffalo in a positive light and didn't see the good neighbor side of us. But I think we can change that. I think that if we are progressive and assertive, we can put reforms in place that will hopefully, people will see us in a different light, that we do care about police, that we do care about our residents, and we want to make sure the two can coexist. When people talk about defunding the police, and I think about what's happening in my district, where I had a murder on the east side, and I had another shooting on Bailey, and they say defund the police, I don't know where they're living. But where I live and the residents who I represent, they want the police. And in many cases, they respect the police and I want to keep it that way. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilmember Wingo.
You're muted. All right, here I am. Can you hear me? Okay. I'm going to push back a little bit and suggest that this duty to intervene is more than just a blanket system, okay? Going to push back and literally define duty to be an expectation, a requirement. Duty is a requirement. We have to do our duty. People are expecting us to do our duty. Duty to intervene, to intervene literally means to come in between and/or to disrupt, okay? There's a policy right now that states that an officer who is witnessing someone using force that is not proportionate to the suspected activity, crime or whatever, they are required and expected to disrupt that, to get in the middle of that. I truly believe that if our officers were required to live in the City of Buffalo, maybe they would know the people they are policing. Maybe they would understand the nuances of the various cultures in the city. I believe this duty to intervene is, I don't believe it's a blanket system. I believe right is right and wrong is wrong. Therefore, if you are witness to someone getting their ass whooped, then you are hereby required and expected to intervene, period. Now, what about all of the folks who are getting beat up? What about how they get treated because of the color of their skin? How about a person who is not black does not have to worry about surviving, and yes, surviving a police stop? Because the people who are pulling them over don't understand the culture. We have great cops and we have bad cops. It's just unfortunate that black folk, you seem to get faced with the bad cops more often than any other race, any other ethnicity in this country. I'm just talking about what I'm talking about. But at the end of the day, I don't want us to feel like we are attacking the police because we are not attacking the police. We are talking about the accountability of the union and how they are enabling the bad behavior of a few bad police. And unfortunately, let me just put this here real quick. Unfortunately, there are bad people who make an entire ethnicity look bad. So because I got black skin, because I'm a black man, there are people who use their same myopic perceptions of my culture on all of us. That ain't fair either now, is it? No, I didn't think so. So at the end of the day, what we need to do is make sure that the policies that we put in place are good policies and make sure that the union can't stop these policies. We don't have any control over the union. We can't walk up to the union and say A, B, C, or D, do this or that. A lot of things are contractual. They're contractual. In other words, we have no authority. What we can do is reallocate. What we can do is reassess. What we can do is restructure. That's what we can do, and I think that's what we should do. And some folk might be saying too little, too late. I'll say this is the perfect time. Let's do it now. Let's do it right now. Let's make sure that we're on the right side of human lives. Let's make sure that we're on the right side of folks seeing all of our humanity, even when they, no. See me as a black man, yes, I'm black, but also recognize my humanity as well. Recognize my humanity. Don't tell me you don't see color. You see my black skin, see my black skin, but also see my humanity. Treat me like you would treat your son. Treat my son like you would treat your son. And I just believe that if we were all neighbors, if I had an officer living across the street from me over here on Victoria in the hood off of Fillmore, I believe this neighborhood would be a little bit different. You want to know why? Because the people of the community would be able to see an officer be a human being. They would see an officer grilling in his backyard. They would see the officer's children. This officer wouldn't be just a blue or a black uniform. This officer would be a man to them too. Somebody talk to me. I just really need all of us to understand one thing, that as long as we have these policies that the union are enabling negative behavior for, we will never have the right reform. Mr. Chair, I'm done.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Scanlon.
Thank you, Council President. I completely agree with Councilmember Wingo's assessment of the word duty and requirement of people to ensure, people, members of the Buffalo Police Department to ensure the well-being of our constituency, 100%. What I was talking about when I referenced kind of a blanket approach to it was, and this is maybe an extreme example, but what if an officer's sibling or friend is being detained by an officer and intervenes on behalf of that person for whatever reason? And that's why I was just saying, just not look at it as a blanket policy and just make sure that when we're putting any, when we work for any amendments toward the policy, that ultimately each case will be looked at individually. Just, again, that's an extreme example, but that's just what I'm talking about. Not eliminating their duty to intervene for the well-being of the constituency at all.
Thank you, sir. I think that what is so important, I think Councilmember Wyatt talked about this as far as this open communication. You know, I have offered to have conversation with any union leadership because I think that at the end, I don't think I've been taken up on it. But any conversation that has to happen, we need to understand and be understood. So when I woke up this morning, I started thinking about people who are visiting the hospital and this whole situation of people complaining because they are feeling like they're dying, right? So you walk in the hospital room, you don't walk in the hospital room and say, I'm not going to talk to you because you feel like you're dying. At the end of the day, if people feel, and not only feel, but have proof that there is disparity in treatment, it needs to be attended to. Some areas that have had a better result in trying to change policy have the cooperation of people, of the, those in command, of unions, of council people, and of the administration. As long as this is a fight and it is not, it will never be finished. As long as it's a fight, it'll never be finished. There have to be people who understand that at the end of the day, these are people who are saying, we're tired. We, people, we know that you've done certain things, but there's more that needs to happen. And until you take care of my ailment, I'm going to keep hollering and I'm going to keep screaming because what I'm asking is for somebody to come in the room and help me with what is killing me, what is bothering me, what I am aggrieved about. There was a word of left out in the union, and I'm glad that we're having this brief discussion that, you know, at times the union feels left out. Well, that's the same way that some neighborhoods feel and some people feel left out. We're left out of justice, we're left out of the conversation, we're left out. So you've got the union saying they feel left out. But before the union has felt left out, there are tens of thousands of people who have felt left out. And I'm not going to make a speech on it because what's in front of us is about improving policies. But I'll end, I guess I already have. At the end of the day, until you attend to that which is yelling because of the hurt, until we attend and we go into that room of that which is dying and we're all in, the fight will continue. Sooner or later, something will change. And I said in a live the other day that, you know, certain words that are being used around, they might not have been defined. And because those words are all over the place, but I don't think that many people would disagree with saying, add mental health people to the force to respond. But you need data and that's why I've asked for this policy, uh, these policies to be reviewed. So we can look at the data and if over eighty percent, seventy percent or a great majority of our calls, our mental health issues, let's move the money around. And I said this the other day, that we couldn't have done it when it was asked a few days before the budget because we were up against a legal mandate to decide a budget. It wasn't going to happen in a real way. We could have, we could have got in front of the cameras and said, "We're going to do it," but we didn't, we didn't have enough time in two days uh, to consider these things. I promise you that if we get together and begin working in that way, that the next budget, which is going to start being talked about in months, uh, will be different. Um, that allocations will be different. Uh, but that calls for uh, less, I mean, for, for working um, and not just talking. Um, anybody who hasn't been heard on this issue? All right, um, this was a part of the packet that was, or the numbers that were already called. Um, I believe that all of the votes were unanimous on those. I didn't see any objections. So I do want those who are watching to realize the three things that were brought forward today. Um, the investigation into Kari O'Horn's situation, the uh, improving police policies that we are asking that there be a committee that is sat immediately, not in August, not in September, not in October, immediately that this happens. Um, and also about reviewing the policy of um, the duty to intervene has been unanimously, if I'm not mistaken, if anybody, if I'm calling you out and I'm wrong, please stop me, has been unanimously approved by the entire Buffalo Common Council. Next item.
Item number thirty-one, Hispanic Heritage Corridor banners for 2020.
Motion to approve. And you want to, items thirty-one and thirty-two.
Second by uh, President Pro Tem Scanlon.
Councilmember Bowman?
Yes.
Councilmember Farrelletto?
Yes.
Councilmember Galumbek?
Yes.
Councilmember Noakowski?
Yes.
Council President Pridgen?
Yes.
Majority Leader Rivera?
Yes.
President Pro Tem Scanlon?
Yes.
Councilmember Wingo?
Yes.
Councilmember Wyatt?
Yes.
Item number thirty-three, support for repeal of New York State Civil Rights Law, Section fifty-eight.
Motion to adopt.
To adopt, second by Councilmember Wyatt. Councilmember Wingo?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would just like to say that I appreciate all of my colleagues who have supported this resolution. And uh, words cannot express how grateful I am that this will happen coincidentally on this day. A lot of you are probably wondering why I'm wearing all black today. I'm wearing all black today because today is George Floyd's funeral. I can't be there with the family. I did not know Mr. Floyd. But Mr. Floyd is me. I'm wearing black and mourning because the officer who killed this black king had eighteen complaints against him. So today, even right now, the New York State Assembly is voting and they're deliberating and they're fighting right now. They're going to pass it prayerfully. They're going to pass repealing New York State Civil Rights Law, Section fifty-a, which prohibits us from foiling the personnel record of a police officer as it relates to and pertains to their disciplinary history. It's not to find out what they, where they live. It's not to find out how old they are. It's not to find out what shoe size they wear. This is clearly and specifically to ensure that as an attorney is litigating a case for a complaint against an officer, there is relevant information to further investigate whether or not this officer has a history of abuse, a history of brutality, a history of using excessive force that is not proportionate to whatever situation that they find themselves in as it relates to a suspect. That's what this is about today. I thank my colleagues because this is just the beginning. There will be a myriad of resolutions, I'm sure, coming forward in the next coming days, of which, of course, we've already been doing massive amounts of research to ensure that these are substantive laws. We have meetings with a, a, a host of community leaders to ensure that we are writing legislation, we are writing ordinance amendments, we are writing resolutions that reflect what they want to see, things that we know that we have the power to effectuate change in. So I want to again say thank you to all the councilmembers who are supporting this. And again, thank you to all of the community members who kept the pressure on long enough so that these pipes bursts in our favor. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, Councilmember Scanlon.
Thank you, Council President. Um, as I mentioned yesterday in caucus, I um, I had a lot of questions as I, as I researched fifty-eight more and more. I was left with more questions than I had answers and um, due to the, the, the time crunch here, as I stated yesterday, I'm going to vote in the negative on this today. Again, if there was a move to repeal and replace with some of the legislation that addressed some of the questions I had, I'd probably be more inclined to vote for it, but at this time, I'm going to vote the negative. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir. Councilmember Wyatt?
Thank you, and thank you, Mr. President. Um, I just want to commend my councilmember, uh, Lucy, Lucy's Wingo for putting this forward and also the leadership of the Majority Leader, Crystal People Stokes, um, and galvanizing her caucus um, to make sure this happens. You know, um, I'm from the private sector and when I came into government, I just couldn't understand some things. You know, I didn't understand why police didn't get evaluation. I didn't understand why the fire, the fire didn't get examination, uh, review. In all my career, you have an evaluation. Um, those things helped you to get raises, but I guess the way this works, everybody gets a raise. So if you're not a good firefighter or you're not good a police officer, you still get a raise. Um, I don't know how that works. Um, I think that if you have deputies and you have battalion chiefs and people who do evaluations, they should be able to do an evaluation on an individual who is under their responsibility. I think that we have to go further in looking at that. I don't know if that's going to be something that happens, but if in your evaluation, those write-ups are in there, you see them. And there's sometimes you have to make decisions. However, if there's no annual reviews, if there's no review at all, then you know, you're kind of like, you know, I'm in a, in the office and I'm working with people and this person is not working that hard, I'm busting my butt, but this person gets the same raise I get. I think there's something wrong with that. I know this is different because someone said, "Oh, this is government." Yeah, I understand it's government, but that doesn't mean it's right. That doesn't mean it's the best practice. It just mean that that's what we've done forever, not really exploring the opportunities of how we can get people to work more efficiently, more effectively and make certain that the, the things that we expect them to do, they do. It should not have been all this time that this individual, who had, I believe fifteen to eighteen infractions, was able to kill a man being on his neck for eight minutes and forty-six seconds. And those are things that have happened for a long time. You know, one of the elected officials said the other day, "We're talking about the things that we've seen. We don't know what the things that we haven't seen." So we can stand here today and I'm, again, I'm appreciative to the Majority Leader in our caucus and, and deliberating this and I hope, as Councilmember Wingo said, as we passed today, I definitely support it and I think it's the right thing to do. Again, this is not against anyone. I think that any one of us in our jobs and we as elected officials, if we don't do our jobs, we won't have a job. That's the democratic process. But it seems as though when you are in a personnel matter of the state of New York in its various instances, it's very difficult to get people who perform poorly or who don't perform at all. They can either have a job, get their pay, but in the private sector, that wouldn't happen because they're going to make a decision. Either you're going to be able to work and stay with us and be effective or you're not going to be here. So they're not going to pay you thousands of dollars, hundreds of thousands of dollars to sit at home for not being, doing a good job. So again, I support this and thank you, Councilmember Ringo, for bringing it forward.
Um, just been informed that the Senate has passed uh, the repeal of fifty-eight and that the Assembly is right now in uh, debate, uh, but it is expected to pass. Great.
All right, here are no other comments. Council, oh, Councilmember here?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. We're correcting a wrong. The intent of this legislation from the very beginning was not to shield police officer for past misconducts. If this legislation passes today, from the moment a police officer goes to the police academy, they will be explained and told that if you make a mistake, if you use physical force that isn't warranted, that they can go into your file. If you have a number of cases in your file, they can go into your file and it can be used against you. And that is a deterrent, believe it or not. When I went through the academy, I was shaken by things that can happen, the negative things that can happen to a police officer if they do the wrong thing. And that stuck in my mind. I says, "I can lose my freedom. I can lose my livelihood. I can lose my pension. I can lose all those things." And that was always in my mind as a deterrent. If they pass this law, I'm sure when they go through to the police academy, they're going to teach each one of these new recruits, and not only these new recruits, but the current police officers, that this is what can happen when you use excessive force or continually, uh, now, I don't think they're going to go into the police officers' records to find things that really, i- in, in our files, you probably have uh, accommodations. You probably have officers that done great thing, that, I mean, awards. When you go into your personnel file, you're going to find some really good things. There's some really good police officers. They're doing great work. And I want them to receive all of the credit for the good work, but they'll also find a few guys perhaps that have a history of misconduct. And those are the people that they're looking for. So I believe that going forward, if this legislation passes today, officers will be alert, be careful, this is just another deterrent, to be even more careful how much force you use and when you use it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Did we, uh, clerk, did we already, did I already give a second?
Yes, you did. Seconded by Wyatt was stated earlier.
All right, next item.
Item number thirty-four, Budget and Salary Amendment.
Motion to approve items thirty-four and thirty-five.
Second by Councilmember Bowman.
Councilmember Bowman?
Yes.
Councilmember Farrelletto?
Yes.
Councilmember Galumbek?
I'm sorry, but my uh, computer froze up. Which item are we voting on?
This one is item number thirty-four and thirty-five, which is a Budget and Salary Amendment and Transfer of Funds is the other item.
Okay, yes.
Councilmember Noakowski?
Yes.
Council President Pridgen?
Yes.
Majority Leader Rivera?
Yes.
President Pro Tem Scanlon?
Yes.
Councilmember Wingo? Councilmember Wyatt?
Yes.
Before you call the next item, I wanted to apologize. Councilmember Galumbek, did I miss you on the discussion in the last item?
Yes.
Um, I can go back. I just looked over. I'm, I'm keeping a log and when I just looked back, it wasn't on purpose. Uh, before she calls the next item, would you like us to revisit that for your comments?
Uh, yes, please.
Let's go back to item, which, which item was it? Was the one we were just talking about, I think about fifty-eight.
Item number thirty-three, I believe, is the Support for Repel of New York State Civil Rights.
Uh, we're going to revisit that item for um, Councilmember Galumbek uh, to be able to state, uh, whatever he likes to state for the record. So to revisit this, second by Councilmember Galumbek and then by Councilmember here.
Okay, uh, thank you. Um, yeah, I'm going to join Mr. Scanlon in the negative on this vote. Um, I struggled with this one over the weekend. Uh, I did some research on it. I had friends who are attorneys from the left and the right that I called up and asked questions. Um, I got a lot of mixed uh, uh, answers from people. I actually had a couple of people that we would probably consider to the right that said I should vote uh, uh, to repeal it. A couple of friends of mine that would be to the left that said that, well, I, I think that it should be replaced, but not necessarily repealed. Um, and so on this one, I'm going to vote no, uh, similar to the reason that Mr. Scanlon mentioned. I think that there should be some sort of a replacement um, to this fifty-eight rather than just a complete uh, um, repeal. Thank you.
Thank you. And again, I apologize. Let the record um, be corrected uh, that Mr. Galumbek is in the negative on that item. Councilmember Farrelletto, you have the floor.
Thank you very much. I just wanted to, while we're discussing this item, I just want to recognize there were so many people that had emailed myself over the weekend about this item and other items in the last few days. Um, at some point on Friday, um, the City Hall website crashed and the emails crashed. So from some point Friday, Saturday, Sunday, we weren't getting the emails. I received a, I was able to open a bunch of the emails on Monday. I was replying to a lot of those people and come to find out those emails weren't even being sent. I talked with MIS this morning. So if anyone didn't receive, didn't receive a response, I just wanted you to know that we were having issues with our City Hall emails and we certainly did get your emails. We didn't get them right when they were sent. But I think we have all received them at some point between last night and tonight. And I was told that us were going to be able to reply to them and it will be working. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir. I think it's, it may be back up. We, we're starting to get some of those through now or, you know, some that we sent out are starting to go out. All right, we're going to the, the item, back to the agenda.
Um, Council President Majority Leader, we have the uh, table item. That's the last item. If you guys wanted to revisit that, which is a receiving file. It's a resolution on the outside, restaurant outdoor seating.
I, I believe the sponsor, Councilmember Farrelletto, is that okay to receive and file now?
Yes, it is.
Motion to receive and file.
All right, motion to receive and file, second by Councilmember Farrelletto.
Announcement of committee meetings, um, Finance Committee meeting will be Tuesday, June sixteenth, twenty twenty at ten AM. The following meeting will be streamed live on www.facebook.com/bflocc.
Councilmembers, any announcements for your districts? Councilmember Wingo? You are muted.
I feel silly. I'm sorry. Listen, Maston District is excited to announce that we have several uh, events happening because of our inability to meet on the second Saturday of every month, of which the Maston District literally meets and has a community stakeholders meeting every second Saturday of every month. We uh, meet at eight-thirty in the morning. Uh, as you can see on your screen, uh, family, this is a, not a substitution, but this is what we're doing in lieu of, because we can't have our stakeholders meeting. We're doing our drive-through stakeholders breakfast and that will be at the Delavan Grider Community Center. I want to thank my legislative assistant, Bria Johnson, for coming up with such an innovative way to ensure that our members and our community are still receiving information and also uh, who have out, who have all come to, to, to expect that, that nice warm meal. Now, this won't be a warm meal, but at least we're giving you something, family. We're giving you something. And this is going to be from nine AM to eleven AM on Saturday, June the thirteenth, all right? So please meet us at the Delavan Grider Center on Saturday, June the thirteenth, from nine AM to eleven uh, AM. Also, in the Maston District, we are also pleased to uh, say that we have been partnering with Rafa Family Medicine and we have coronavirus testing, COVID-nineteen testing in Maston. We have three days, three locations, three days, three locations. We thank the innovative uh, 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 thinking on this so that we can make sure that we have it in various locations to ensure that everyone has an opportunity to get tested to ensure that you don't have coronavirus. All right, now Thursday, the eleventh, it would be in the parking lot of Antioch Baptist Church. We're asking that you please enter on Urban Street. We're doing that to keep the traffic flow out of the street. All right, so please uh, meet us on Thursday, uh, this week, Thursday, at Antioch Baptist Church. The parking lot is uh, on Fillmore, but you can enter on Urban. So please enter on Urban. And then Thursday, the following week, we will have the COVID testing at the Delavan Grider Center. And that will be from, all of these are from ten AM to twelve PM for two hours. And then again, the next week, our third uh, testing in Maston will be at Sixty Hetley Place. And if you don't know where Sixty Hetley Place is, it's that beautiful little mansion, that little beautiful brick mansion that was fully restored by the city uh, that, that the uh, taxpayers of Hamlin Park Taxpayer Association were responsible for being instrumental in rebuilding. So you can pre-register at www.rafafamilymedicine.com/testing. Again, that you can see on your screen, but you can pre-register at www.rafafamilymedicine.com. Again, that you can see it on your screen, but you can pre-register at www.raffafamilymedicine.com/testing. And we're hoping to see a lot of people come out. Please tell your family, friends, it is not just open to Maston. This is open to the entire community. Maston is wanting to be a place where, you know, since we're the heart of the city, we wanted to make sure that you had access to any of these various locations in the community. So thank you again, and please be looking forward to seeing you this Saturday and this Thursday.
Councilmembers, any other councilmember? Councilmember Wyatt?
Um, I just want to thank the community for coming out. Um, on last Saturday, we had our grad, drive-through graduation and I just want to publicly thank um, uh, Chairwoman April Baskins for her support um, and being a co-host, as well as um, thanking KeyBank for their donation and Steve Tyber from Eight Days of Hope, um, that we were able to give all the students, almost a hundred students tablets. Um, so it was a great event. Thank the parents for supporting and sticking with their young person to make certain they made, um, they finished their course in high school, um, even through this pandemic. It was a wonderful event. Again, I want to thank uh, Chair, our Chairwoman, April Baskins, KeyBank, and Kawanza Humphrey, um, Steve Tyber from Eight Days of Hope, and my incredible staff and volunteers for making this thing happen and giving our young people a special day, um, in lieu of, in, in spite of um, COVID-nineteen. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, the Juneteenth of Buffalo and the website is juneteenthofbuffalo.com. Uh, will take place virtually this year, June thirteenth through the fourteenth. So we want people to be reminded um, and to be on board uh, with that. Um, Councilmember Wingo, you have something?
Yeah, real quick. I am so sorry. My, my staff, they, they do a phenomenal job and I just want to make sure that they, they know that I am very appreciative of all of the, the innovative ways that they've come up with to ensure that we are still uh, meeting with and servicing our community. But uh, the, that, 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 that drive-through breakfast, that, that, that was the brainchild of uh, Timothy J. Brown Senior. So I wanted to make sure that I corrected that. Even though Bria is responsible for all of our communications with the community, I want to make sure that it, it, people do know. I don't want to get it wrong, that that was a brainchild of, of Mr. Timothy J. Brown Senior. And I just want to make sure that my staff, but I appreciate you guys, all the help that you've done to make sure that our community knows that we're thinking about them, that we care about them. Thank you.
All right, any other announcements for your districts? Alrighty, com, um, just making sure. Uh, Majority Leader?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, second by Councilmember Mitch Nowakowski.
Re-adjourn.